What do you have, hurry?
We got five o'clock.
I got five o'clock.
Our clock's almost at five. I have a second, thirty seconds.
Alright, let's open my equipment. Since I don't have an official gavel, I want to call the order, call the order, the official plan and zone commission meeting for public hearing will start first. We will, oh, I'd like to thank everybody for being here to celebrate my birthday, so.
Oh, happy birthday.
Cake and cupcake for everybody.
Birthday cheer.
Oh, I guess I only got one. We'll start off, I'd like to have everybody make sure their phones turned off so it doesn't interfere with the meeting.
I'm using my phone as my computer.
Yes, you can do that. We'll start off with the roll call for the public hearing. Commissioner Tallman.
Schneider.
Here.
Lammers.
Present.
Let's excuse Johnson.
Here.
Tallman here. Ingram.
Present.
Hepner.
Here.
Bransgard.
Here.
All right, Hartson, Maine is excused. We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallman. We have one item under public hearing. It's case number ROW 19-202, request to vacate a portion of the original Division Street right-of-way located between Ridgeview Drive and West Seventy-Sixth Street. Earl Gloss is the petitioner. Matt?
Uh, just have a few things. First off, thanks everybody for putting up with this room. I don't know if we've ever had a commission.
I've never had one in here.
The council chambers out and a couple other meeting locations, we were kind of desperate. But just to remind the commission, the process for right-of-way vacation, it's like, it's a two-step process. The first, the first, uh, I'll say, decision-making process determines whether or not the city, in fact, needs a right-of-way for any public purpose. The second step that the commission doesn't get involved with would be the negotiation of the conveyance to the property, of the property, almost in all likelihood, to an adjacent or adjacent property owners. In this case, again, this is next to the rezoning, uh, case, it's next on the agenda. It's thirty-three feet in width. Did, did some research, spent some time in the, uh, the auditor's office trying to figure out why, what was curious to me was why is this, why is this right-of-way only thirty-three feet and whereas most county section roads are sixty-six feet? And Attorney Malloy is here. He, he came to the same conclusion I did. We, I couldn't find any record that there was an additional thirty-three feet, so, um, so that's a, that's two rods wide. A rod is sixteen and a half feet wide, and it's just an old-school surveying tool. That wide sixteen and a half feet, well, if you look at how, how, how acres and sections build upon each other, it's, it's a, it's an easy way to use it, and most surveyors' wagons work much longer to hold a rod, much longer than sixteen and a half. I digress. So, again, we have sent notices out to joining property owners. I know the petitioner is here. Uh, we've really completed our technical review. We got the same issues that would keep the city from supporting, uh, the vacation as right-of-way.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
I do, of course.
Commissioner Lammers.
Just clarifying for me. We would do a vacation regardless of the property zoning around it? Or is this like putting the carton for the horse type of idea?
No, I don't, I don't think it's, um, it's relevant. Now, well, you bring up a good point about, uh, if the rezoning would occur. Usually what happens with, with, uh, when we vacate right-of-way, the zoning will, uh, probably go to, and I'm going to rely on our former assistant city attorney, I don't know if it would, the zoning would go to the middle of, midpoint of that vacated right-of-way, uh, but that's a good question. Do you know?
Well, it depends upon the, the actual property. Um, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mike Malloy. I'm an attorney who represents Earl Gloss, who does business as Sebastian Builders. Earl is seated to my right, who's a local builder, developer in the Quad Cities. Um, this is an old, um, right-of-way that was never developed by the city, um, back when this property was originally annexed into the city from the county when it was a farm. Um, the property owner owned to the center line of the, uh, quarter-section line, uh, of the property, and then, back then, they used to grant an easement for the county road. Um, so this is a, there is no road there right now. This is vacant land, and Mr. Gloss owns, um, about twelve and a half acres of real property. As you can see on this map, um, just to the, um, west of the hatched area, the right-of-way vacation, and he is going to be developing this and submitting an application for C2 rezoning in county year twenty-twenty. And we want to, uh, vacate this land because we believe it should be conveyed to Mr. Gloss as the rightful property owner, because his prior landowner would have owned up to the quarter-section line here. And as Matt's explained to you, uh, vacation is the first step in the process of conveyance, and, um, that's what we're here for tonight, of course. Uh, does anybody have any questions on the commission concerning the property?
Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none.
Old residents.
I'm getting to that. Wait, just a second. I want to make sure commissioners didn't have any questions. Now, I'm opening up the floor to any people that are either in favor of or against. You don't have to state, just state your name and, uh, your question.
Gary Daniel, I live right there. Uh, this is going to be commercial?
We don't know just yet.
That's not.
That's not what we're here for tonight. We're here to talk about the vacation of a road that will never exist.
Okay.
It'll have to come back to us at a later date if he wants to change the zoning.
So this is just vacation?
Yes, this is to vacate a right-of-way. Any additional questions? Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Hepner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what's the current zoning?
Since it's, since it's right-of-way, it has no zoning.
It's the zoning to the west.
The zoning to the west is R, I believe it's R four.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I, I guess I just have one. What is, when you say quarter-section, what's the quarter-section?
We've got a couple hours.
Survey crop?
Um, well, I won't get into a long explanation, but you've certainly flown over, fly over country and when you look out the window and you see these nice neat patches, those are either, these, those are either six hundred and sixty acres, uh, which is one square mile, and then it can be further divided down that. So a quarter section would be half of the section or a hundred and sixty acres.
Oh, okay.
Think I'm doing it that way. Don't ask me how many square rods that is.
We won't.
Don't worry.
It will, it will be an even number.
Bring that to our next meeting.
Talk about principal gradients, too.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, Mr. Malloy, did you have any additional comments?
No.
Thank you. That will close our public hearing of case number ROW 19-02, and should all go well. It'll be back in front of us January.
That's the target, it's now settled on January seventh.
Seventh, correct. Thank you. We will move on to our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tallman.
Snyder.
Here.
Lammers.
President.
Let's excuse Johnson.
Here.
Tallman here. Ingram.
Present.
Hepner.
Here.
And Bransgard.
Here.
We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallman. Uh, let's see, Secretary's report?
Move report.
Second.
All in favor, the secretary's report is written, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It will stay as written. Report a comp plan, Matt.
I'll need a report.
Thank you. We will move on. Zoning activity. Appears as though we have a couple items in front of us tonight. Commissioner Bransgard.
Yes, we have, uh.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into that, I will be abstaining from this case, and Commissioner Lammers will be heavily.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallman.
Okay, we have two items of new business. The first is case number REZ nineteen-11, request of Raju Penmacha to rezone seven-point-four acres located southwest corner of North Division Street and West Seventy-Sixth Street from RMF Residential Multifamily District to C2 Commercial, our corridor, Commercial District in Ward Eight. Staff recommends the Plan and Zone Commission forward, case number REZ nineteen-11, to the City Council with a recommend, recommendation for denial. Can I still move?
Second.
Case number REZ nineteen-11 is moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
And Matt Flynn, community planning. Uh, we've gone through the public hearing process for this. We, uh, discussed, or at least made, made known some concerns about, uh, you've seen this in other cases where, uh, where the city is being asked to rebuild property whether it's not a clear plan in place, um, that sometimes plays more heavily than, than other cases. Um, and I think, really, if you look at the, this intersection, it's not an unreasonable request, but ultimately, we determined it as a staff level, we couldn't support it for a number of reasons. And the, probably the number one reason is that there's already fifteen-point-six acres of C2 land at the, uh, in the southeast quadrant. Uh, we haven't had any serious discussions with, um, with developers on, uh, developing in this area. Is there the long-term potential to create a, a larger commercial note at this location? There may be, but I think at the same time, we're also concerned about the impact a significant commercial development would have on the existing and developing neighborhoods that we expect to occur, uh, to the, uh, to the southwest and southeast of the property. Um, two slides here, we're supposed to rezone, probably zone RMF, and to be honest, if it was rezoned C2, multifamily still would be a, a possibility in that location. But as the commission knows, if we were at R four and looking at an RMF, uh, rezoning, it's very difficult to get property zoned for multifamily, particularly again in, in, I'll say, speculative mode. Um, we're looking north on Division Street roughly from Goose Creek. Uh, we can go back to the, these are the definitions for the land use categories in the comp plan. Um, as you know, under our new code, we have now approval standards for map amendments. And other three zonings, uh, we look at consistency, we look at compatibility of the zoning of nearby property, uh, compatibility with the neighborhood character. Again, um, go back to the old definition residential general, we're not to say that neighborhood scaled, uh, pedestrian-friendly commercial developments occur on the edge of the neighborhood, but, edge of neighborhoods, but in this case, we were concerned about taking, in essence, fifteen-point-six acres of commercial, uh, C2, taking that up to over, over twenty acres, which almost, in my opinion, gets past the definition of, or intent of what a commercial, neighborhood commercial note is. Create any non-conformities. Um, you know, one, one of the burdens on, on applicants for rezoning is, is, you know, the, the whole question of suitability. So you have to start with, is this land suitable for multifamily? I know the petitioner claims that it isn't, but we have a lot of examples of where, uh, successful viable, uh, multifamily developments have gone along major arterial streets. And, and again, with the, um, increasing job opportunities, uh, in the area, this type of housing, I believe, is needed in the neighborhood. We should seek to preserve that. Uh, so again, here, here's a rundown of the reasons why we can't support, um, this rezoning at this time. If you recall, in, in the last paragraph of the staff report says, you know, if, if, uh, the property owner could present a, a development proposal, and that developer can successfully argue that the southwest quadrant is superior to the southeast quadrant, we'd certainly be willing to take another look at it. So our findings would be, would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan because it, it does allow for higher intensity development that's allowed in a, in an RG area. There just simply isn't enough demand for commercial development at this time, um, and the potential of, uh, of, of more negative impacts on, on this round neighborhood if there's too much commercial at this location. So we do recommend denial. Um, if the commission feels like it could support this, ideally should develop your own findings, and as we talked to, talked before, at a minimum, we would recommend that a, that neighborhood commercial note designation be added to the comprehensive plan, future land.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
I have a general question related to.
Commissioner Lammers.
What I've heard you say, um, if I may.
If you may.
I'm confused by hearing, um, speculative versus your recommendations. So if somebody came to you with a definite development plan for C2, when I read your arguments for denial, it doesn't make any difference what that come, what comes to you. You're saying C2 zoning on its own, you're recommending a denial of that zoning based on its compatibility with the surrounding area and, and the other definitions of a residential general or residential multifamily district. So I, I, I'm not going to argue what you're recommending. I agree with it, but I just don't understand your language.
I, those are excellent points. I think what, what you get when you have a, a, I'll say, a proposed development associated with a rezoning request, I agree that in the purest form, we should be looking at simply the comprehensive plan, but when you throw in a proposed development, there may be, again, through the rezoning process, some conditions that may mitigate, uh, some of those, some of the potential harm of a development. Maybe, maybe instead of a full seven-point-oh-four acres, maybe it's just a, a one acre and right at the corner, and you can establish boundaries and buffers from that point. But again, without knowing that, I'll go back to our recommendation at this time, and that's, uh, a recommendation for denial.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none. Would the commissioner like to speak at this time?
Yeah. Uh, I'm Raju Penmacha. I'm representing SB Real Estate, who is the owner of this property. And I respect Matt's comments on the reasons why he's not supporting. However, I disagree with his comments. I'll present my viewpoint, why we should, uh, rezone to commercial, to commercial. You know, even though we have fifteen acres of land that is the southeast corner, uh, as commercial, uh, it is, it is there available. But I'm also looking at, we should not be just, uh, limiting this rezoning process just because we want five, fifteen acres of land at the southeast corner. And, uh, so it's a busy intersection. You got arterial road, collector road, and this was zoned as multifamily. In my view, it is not fit for the, uh, development of residential land. Okay? And the highest and best use of this property, in my opinion, is commercial, not residential. Okay? Right the, right zoning should be based on the highest and best use. It should not be based on just demand, because we have to do it. If not, if we don't do it, we have to do it later. Why wait? And, uh, north side of Seventy-Sixth and south side of Seven, uh, Seventy-Sixth was zoned as commercial, uh, residential, not residential, I'm sorry, the industrial and the commercial right now, except the property just west is residential right now. And so why wait for the demand? We got, uh, industrial property on the north side. Do you zone it based on the demand right now? It's for future demand. Same thing, I'm asking, why we can't do it, even though I talked to, uh, big star guys, they say that we need to have more traffic before they can come in and, um, uh, come up with their, their building in future. So, uh, why this parcel should not be commercial when you got the industrial and commercial already re, uh, zoned? Okay? And it should be zoned, in my opinion, as commercial. At the neighborhood review meeting that we had had October twenty-fourth, about ten people, uh, attended. They are from Oak Brook subdivision, that is on the southeast corner. Not even single one objected to make this one as commercial, C2. And in fact, they are anxious to see a strict mall development at the corner so that they can walk from the neighborhood and, uh, make business. So they never said no for this development. They are anxious to do this. I'm looking for flexibility. You know, right now, the demand is less for commercial, but that does not mean we should not just make a big stop on this one. Okay? One parcel, west of parcel was zoned, uh, residential, and they did not attend the, I did not see anybody attending the neighborhood meeting. They never objected this, uh, this parcel to be commercial. Okay? And nobody objected in the last rezoning meeting that we had on December third to make this one commercial. In summary, please look at the future development of this, uh, intersection and a future demand. Traffic is going to be higher. More industries will come, and the demand for commercial development is going to be there. Please provide, my, approve my reasoning request to commercial at this time. Rezoning should be based on highest and best use, like I mentioned before. It should be commercial. Nobody wants to develop this parcel as residential. Matt mentioned, we'll be depleting the residential land if, if this is not, but we own about a hundred and twenty acres right next to it. That's called Edmon, Edmon's Estates, because they, we're looking for the best time, because we launched that NOW program where they were going to reimburse, uh, funds. It's not there. We got the plans developed. We want to develop, so we got plenty of developable land, or, you know, to develop that, that property. So it's not going to be, we're not going to deplete residential just because, uh, we make it, uh, commercial. Okay? Neighbors are not objecting to this proposal. This parcel is surrounded by Division on the east side, and Seventy-Sixth on the north side, and a creek, Coast Creek on the south side, and goes around the thing. It's all standing by itself. It's not, no negative impact for the neighborhood. Why not make it commercial? We'll have the flexibility, because sometimes, you know, one of the developer asked me, oh, if this is commercial, we are willing to, or we are planning to develop. He was asking me, but I told him that, you know, right now, it's not zoned as a, a commercial. Why wait till the demand grows future? You know, we already got the permit to make the change, and so if we wait, that means we have to repeat the same process again. And think about, what's the future for this facility? We request the planning and zoning of board members to approve my request to rezone, rezone this one as C2 commercial. And thank you very much, and we are here to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Seeing none. Final call. Any last comments from anybody? Yes?
We were at the meetings.
Yes.
Please identify, ma'am, ma'am?
We have concern.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen Kirill.
Thank you.
Uh, eighteen-oh-two, West Seventy-Fifth Place. I live in one of the condos closest to Ridgeview Drive.
Thank you.
And, and I'm worried about the water situation.
Drainage, yes.
That's what I want.
That's exactly. You know, like, we talked, uh, to the city, drainage should not be a problem, because we are, mainly the drainage problem is along the Division Street, where they got the ditches on both sides, and it's eroding. So it's the city's call to make sure there won't be no erosion, and, uh, it's not going to pollute the creek that we got, and that's the main concern. I agree with you guys, with you people. It's the city's, uh, 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 issue. And Matt mentioned that he has to talk to the city people, and , uh, maybe hopefully, they can get funding, and they can put the riprap or pave ditches along both sides of the, uh, creek to make sure that it won't be eroded. But as far as this property is concerned, we should not have any problem, because we are going to design retention ponds to make sure your high water level would not go any higher than what you got.
Then I'll burn.
Yeah, and, uh, actually, I agree with you. I remember, you, you are there. We want to make sure it's going to be according to the code standards, and we'll make sure it's not going to go any higher. It's not going to erode on this property, but it's city's call to take care of the Division Street. And if I'm right, you know, I think we, I didn't discuss now, I remember. So drainage should not be a problem, in my view.
Any additional questions?
My name is Gary Daniel. I live in eighteen-oh-eight, Seventy, Seventy-Fifth Place. I've been to every meeting that I knew about. I was here at the last one downstairs at City Hall.
Yes.
When you weren't there.
What's that one?
You weren't there.
Initially.
The very first one.
The very first one.
Yeah, there've been, this is actually, with a continued public hearing, this has been the third meeting with the plan and zoning on this.
Yeah, I was there last time.
Right, I think you may be referring to that, I think.
The very first.
November third meeting.
Oh, okay, because we did not even know that there is a meeting on this one. That's the main reason I could not attend.
Right now, this is all agricultural land. There's been no problem with it. Our speculation, we don't know what they want to build, or how much is going to be built, how much concrete's going to be there. But there's, it's about a hundred-foot drop from Seventy-Sixth down to our property. I can't see controlling that much water if you turn it into concrete. That's all I know.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Now, I want to remind everybody that a vote of yes is for denial. That is the staff's recommendation. A vote of no is in favor of the petition. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner. Johnson? Yes. Hefner?
No.
Bransgard? Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers? Yes. It's three yeses, two noes.
Thank you. Next item?
The next item is case REZ 19.13, request of Alex Kelly on behalf of Pegasus 62 LCC for a zoning map amendment on 9,000 square feet, more or less, a property located at 2012 East 11th Street from R4C Single Family and Two-Family Residential Zoning District to CT Commercial Transition Zoning District in Ward 5. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the two listed findings and forward case REZ 19 dash 13 to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, and I so move.
Second.
Case number REZ 19-13 has been moved in second and for discussion. Matt?
Thanks. I don't have a whole lot more to add to Brian's report. I think, again, I think most people know this property or know the business, and it's one of those unique little properties on the edge of the East Village, and I, to be honest, I think, you know, that new zoning classification of CT will apply to this property, would do, do well to help accommodate it in its proposed use as a chiropractor's office. So I think the CT zoning fits the bill, let's say, in this location. There are the listed permitted uses within CT. Pretty extensive list, but if you look at, you know, it's really designed to utilize these properties on the, on the fringe between residential and commercial wealth. So we didn't have, we haven't had any opposition or real questions. There are your findings, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? The staff? Seeing none. I don't see the petitioner here. Correct?
Nor do I.
Okay.
Was that the public hearing?
Right. I just didn't know if he was hiding.
He's downstairs waiting for us.
Downstairs waiting.
Yeah. Wrong room. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Snyder?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes.
Hefner?
Yes.
And Bransgard?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomlin?
This concludes our, our activity.
Thank you, Commissioner Bransgard. It appears as though we have no subdivision activity. We have one future business, apparently for yet another quick, quick trip out by 280 and Highway 61. Any communications from anybody? Seeing none. Any additional business? Seeing none. I would like to make a comment that, as you all probably know, we're losing a staff member. Ryan, Ryan's moving up to North Liberty to set the new position as director of their thriving town. I personally will miss him. I think he did a great job, was an asset to staff.
So will he.
I'm sure he will.
She's a good guy.
If you haven't reached out to him, I'd appreciate everybody sending, dropping him a little note and thanking him for his service. He would definitely be missed. I appreciate everybody's attendance tonight. I know we were stretching to get a quorum. Commissioner Lammers, I'm glad you were able to make it to allow us to conduct business. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, saying bye-bye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Please drive home.